I'd like to call the official releasing of Edgewood County conditions to order. Ms. Evans, safety instructions, please.
Yes, sir. I'd like to call Mr. William Johnson to read our safety instructions.
Good evening, everyone. To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, I want to give the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right. Then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Granville Street, the street that runs alongside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will help provide direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway, where we will remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter in the building, we will run. If there is an accessible escape path, try to evacuate the premises. Hide, if you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found. Lock any doors that you can. Fight, as a last resort, and only if your life is in immediate danger. Our staff will provide assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Right hand, would you please, off.
You're talking about our father, we are so grateful and thankful for your grace and mercy as we've entered the last month of 2019. May your blessings fall upon us, that we might share and celebrate what the reason is for this season. Bless our minds, we might think on a thing that will make this county a better place on which to live, for those that we serve, through Christ our Lord, we do pray. Amen.
Having your agenda packaged to the minutes of the previous meeting, if there are no additions or corrections, we'll give the emotion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none, the minutes are approved, they're submitted. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, here we have the election of officers of this board. I'll turn the chair over to Mr. Pierce. Mr. Pierce, would you take the chair?
Yes, sir. Are there any nominations for chairman of the board commissioners for the year 2020?
Mr. President, I have nominated Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Wiggins as chair.
Any second. All is in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye.
Aye. Thank you for your intense support from the service board.
This is aye.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, the nomination's open for our vice chair.
Mr. Chair, nomination, Reverend House.
Is there a second?
Say.
Any other nominations? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none, Reverend House is our vice chair.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Without an objection from the board, I'd like to move one item, and that is the "up" now, and that will be item "F". The consideration of approval of the reappointment of Mr. Lewis as tax administrator. Our honor, Carol White is here, she has to be sworn. Would there be objections? If not, with the tax collector, please come forward to be sworn.
So you'll need to take action first, I'll give you a little background, if I could.
Go ahead, go ahead.
North Carolina general statutes require that the board commissioners appoint both a tax collector and a tax assessor for a term of at least two years, and no more than four years. As you know, we have a tax administrator, Mr. Teresa Lewis, who serves both roles. Mrs. Lewis does meet the statutory requirements for serving in that role. Therefore, I recommend that you consider the reappointment of Mr. Teresa Lewis, in her capacity as the tax administrator, to serve as our tax collector and tax assessor for a four-year term.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You can be sworn now.
I would like to thank y'all for that opportunity, I appreciate your support.
And we thank you for your continued service.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You do solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful in your true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of the said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, and that you will not allow your actions as tax assessor and tax collector to be influenced by personal or political friendship or obligation. So have you God. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Kirk.
Yes, oh well.
Back to the...
My pleasure, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Back to the agenda, item six, a public hand is called to order to receive citizen comments and questions related to a proposed amendment to the county ordinance regarding smoking. I call the public hand to order. Would you please read the public notice, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir. Notice hereby given, a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM, in the commissioners' room of the county administration building, located at 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarver, North Carolina. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider an act on a proposed amendment to Chapter 10, Environment, Article, Section 10-1, Smoking of the Edgecombe County Code of Ordinances. The proposed amendment is intending to amend the current ordinance that restricts smoking in county buildings to restrict smoking, the use of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, in county buildings, grounds, and vehicles. A copy of the proposed amendment is on display for public inspection in the office of the county manager, in the county administration building, Room 402, St. Andrew Street, Tarver, North Carolina, 27886, during regular business hours. A copy may also be viewed on the county's website at www.edgewoodcountync.gov. All parties interested are invited and urged to be present, make their appointment. Anyone with a physical limitation or language barrier that would need special accommodations at the public unit should call 252-641-7834, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At your October meeting, you voted to move forward with changes to our smoking policy that would ban smoking in all county buildings and on county grounds. There is a section of the county's code ordinances that speaks to this that would need to be amended. Enclosed is a draft of the proposed ordinance changes. A change to the county's ordinance requires a public hearing. Therefore, I recommend that you call for public comments tonight, and consider citizens' input before taking action. I would like to point out, just to make sure that we are clear on what proposed change includes. It includes smoking, of course cigarettes, cigars, little cigars, snuff, chewing tobacco, that is under the umbrella of all tobacco products. It also includes what they call e-cigarettes, is included in the proposed ordinance change.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call for public comments. If you'd like to comment, please call, come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Is there anybody for public comment? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Shane Hornell, 4186 Pleasant Hill Road, Rockville, North Carolina. I'm standing here at first, on behalf of the Edgecombe County Farm Bureau, and we have a written letter, would you like to read for y'all?
Please.
On, Edgecombe County Commissioners, we are writing to you on behalf of Edgecombe County Farm Bureau. This is an agricultural base board, made up of local Edgecombe County farms. It has recently been made public that a vote was passed to ban tobacco use on county-owned property. There was already a smoking ban in all county buildings, which we feel is more than adequate. We are a county that has been built on tobacco production. This income generated from tobacco in the past, present, and future is extremely vital to Edgecombe County. We feel that this vote from this board shows just how out of touch y'all are with agriculture and the tobacco farmers in this county. There was no outside pressure to ban tobacco products in Edgecombe County property, so therefore we are absolutely against this decision, and feel that it should be reversed. Farmers have been a mainstay in this community for decades, which has provided funds for Edgecombe County in numerous ways. Agriculture is a vital economic engine here, and with your vote, it opens the weakest persona of tobacco farming in our county, and it shows how out of touch y'all are with our industry, and how it impacts here. Our board is calling for a reversal of this vote, before it goes into effect. And this is signed by our vice president, Farm Bureau, Tom Porter, is our president, he was not even ten here, but this letter is all signed by him. Now, to put on my farming coat, as an agricultural farmer here in Edgecombe County, a tobacco farmer, I have some concerns about this. Number one, the police that y'all gonna have to have, the police, this is an amendment that we were already banning in all county buildings, which to me, that's very sufficient. I personally am very disappointed in the vote. I know there's a lot of people, some commissioners here that have an agriculture background, and without getting any more resistance to what he did, I personally am very disappointed in that. And it comes from the front of Edgecombe County, being a tobacco-based town. It really concerns me, the thought that was going into this, that we didn't have any more resistance to this. And we would just like to see, I guess, more respect or more thought from this board for agriculture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak? Please state your name and address, sir, for the public chair.
Matthew Drake, 100 Worland, Pine Tops. Mr. Chairman, Board, today I represent many different groups, but I'd like to represent a tobacco farmer, a young tobacco farmer, a new tobacco farmer here in Edgecombe County. Two years ago, I was born and raised in Pine Tops, just started to come back home and farm. And I want to give you all a couple of facts and figures of what tobacco has done for Edgecombe County over the last few years. In 2010, $26,000 was awarded to Edgecombe County for a grant from the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund, to help develop and update our farmers' market. 2017, $10 million was donated from the Golden Leaf Foundation. And that went to equip and construct an advanced manufacturing training center at Edgecombe Community College. In 2014, $1.5 million was given from the Golden Leaf Foundation for a biotech and medical facility. In 2017, there approximately 6,400 acres of tobacco raised in this county, with a gross income of $29 million. 2016, 6,500 acres, with a gross income of $27.5 million, approximately. 2015, 6,900 acres, and $30 million. So the last 10 years, tobacco's contributed $315 million in gross revenue to this county. My question for you all is, what is the purpose of the ban? Have we had severe problems with smoking in the inside buildings? Have we had severe problems with smoking outside of buildings? And if so, can we not take a more practical approach, extend some smoking boundaries, and instead of, I guess, outlawing smoking or tobacco-use products on all county properties? Second, what Mr. Hornell mentioned, which was, who's going to police this policy? What is the need for the update, and why are we voting on it tonight? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak? Is there anybody else to speak? If not, I'd like to join the public hearing. You've heard the comments from all farmers, and the people that raise the tobacco. You see what the recommended action is? What is the place of the board?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations as presented.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Here are none, the motion fails. Was it not actually permitted, the motion failed, is that right?
Mr. Witness, if I could make a suggestion, you'll probably remember, some years back, the board did take action to change the policy to no smoking in the building. At that time, the additional step of actually amending the ordinance was not done. And so, if you go to read our ordinance, it does not actually ban it inside the buildings. It says in designated smoking areas. For example, the third floor break room here still shows, I think, in the ordinance. So, I think if the board is not taking action tonight to move forward with the recommendation of banning it from all facilities, I think we at least need to clear up the ordinance to suit the policy that we've had in practice for a number of years.
But if we got nothing in place, you do what you want to do.
Sir?
If you got, what do we have in place?
So, the ordinance basically says that you can't smoke in designated areas inside of the building.
You can.
That's what the ordinance says. The board took action on the policy some years ago to change that, where there could be no smoking inside of the building. But we never took the additional step of amending the ordinance.
That was, so that, with that, with the action that you said we took, that still could be designated, based on the building?
It could be, yes.
Would that require another vote here?
To amend the ordinance, I think so. We've got almost a mirror situation now, where the board has voted to ban smoking on farms, but not voted to amend the ordinance.
Well, we've got...
At least tonight.
Right, we've got a situation of 6-1.
Yes, sir.
And tonight, the board decided not to move forward with their policy, okay? Tell me what we should do.
You can take the board.
Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pierce, in terms of addressing what Mr. Evans has stated, how should we handle that?
I think if the ordinance is going to be amended in a way other than what's been presented tonight for this public hearing, then it will be, another public hearing will need to be called on that proposed amendment.
To clean it up, in the way that the public feels that it already is?
If that's what you choose.
I would have, if the board had objections to that?
None.
Bring that, bring that, well, why don't we call for another public hearing the next week? That's what we should do now.
Yes, sir.
And that was to put, that would be to put what we thought was already the policy in place, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to call for a public hearing on the county ordinance regarding smoking? And generally, questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye. All opposed, that public hand is called.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could we potentially have a restriction, let's say, between the health department? We have one of the worst health records in the state of North Carolina, but we won't allow smoking right there at the health department. Can we designate certain buildings, and then other buildings not?
Yes, sir.
Where the health department also is the service department.
Right.
So we're talking about a human service field, in terms of how we do it. I think there needs to be maybe further conversation, and you will have a further conversation in terms of, maybe, the management that also suggests to us, and it makes me how that, how we can accomplish. Okay? Any other question? Here are none, moving on to, the public hearing is called to order to receive citizen comments and questions related to proposed change to leak adjustment policy, and consideration of offering a leak protection program. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Mr. Pierce, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Notice is hereby given, a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 PM, in the commissioners' room of the county administration building, located at 201 St. Andrew Street, Tarver, North Carolina. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider a proposed change to the county's leak adjustment policy for water and sewer customers, as well as to consider offering a leak protection program. The county currently allows water customers to get an adjustment once previously, if it can be shown that a plumbing leak contributed to an extraordinarily high bill. The board will consider whether to offer a leak protection program where, for a minimal monthly cost, customers can have a coverage that will pay for the high bill due to a leak obstacle limit. This will be through a third-party vendor. If the board approves offering this leak protection program, they will consider amending the policy wherein the county will not allow for leak adjustments for those customers who opt out of the leak protection program. The board would like to have citizens in, but only on the basis of the Act. Therefore, citizens are encouraged to attend this public hearing and to make their views none. Anyone with a physical limitation or language barrier that would need special accommodations at the public hearing should call 252-641-7834, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
The county currently has a policy to offer leak adjustments for water customers if it can be shown that a plumbing leak has contributed to an extraordinarily high bill. Though this certainly is beneficial for our customers, it is costly for our water and sewer operations. I propose a change to that policy that would eliminate the leak adjustment, but also propose that we offer a leak protection program, the details of which were presented at your last meeting. Considering this would be a substantial change for our customers, considering this would be a substantial change for our customers, you wisely elected to hold a public hearing to solicit citizen input. Following the public hearing, I recommend that you approve the policy change as recommended, and authorize me to execute a contract with the Serveline to offer the leak protection program to our customers. I do want to remind you, and this was shared with you at the last meeting, we average somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 per year lost because of these adjustments. Also, you'll see in the information in your packet, it describes different options that can be offered through this leak protection program, if you so choose to, for us to do this. Our recommendation is that we go with what's listed as option two, which you'll see is offering to residential customers at $1.70 a month, to commercial customers $16.05, and to commercial customers with multiple tenants at $32.10 a month.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to speak, would you please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Is there anybody here to speak? Here are none, I'd like to join the public hearing, and the recommendation is to approve the leak policy. Is there such a motion?
Certainly.
Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Charlie, they say this would be a fake, all at once, any year's time.
The option we're choosing, get up to $1,000 in adjustment for one occurrence, but it can't cross over two buildings, I think.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have, I still have a problem with this. I had a father that wanted to abuse you last night, for a dollar more a month, we got the same protection, but all of us, we not have to charge a dollar seven, we get rid of these citizens out because they refuse to buy, trying to pour it in, and they won't have no protection. It was all more a month, everybody in this county can have protection, I raised about $6,400 a year, just to cover our bills, and we'll drag a third party in, and everybody is covered.
Well, I do want to note that through our water and sewer program, we are not allowed to offer this kind of service ourselves. Now, you can choose to raise the rates to cover this loss, but we could not, you know, raise it up too.
You have to...
You got any comments on that?
Mr. Evans stated correctly.
Any other question? We have a motion, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, let it be known by the votes, aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand, all in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Three, all opposed, let it be known by raising your hand. It is not approved. I'd like to say one thing, ladies and gentlemen, just about your presence. Your presence has made a difference, so when there's something on the agenda that you have concerns about, please come to speak, because the board has shown that it does listen. Schedule appointment, Ms. Simmons.
Yes, sir, Ms. Simmons. I'd like to invite Mr. Lawrence Garcia, our chief court counselor, to join the committee. Mr. Lawson is going to talk with you tonight about what's going to raise the age legislation to affect this today. Mr. Lawson and I have served on our county's JCPC council for a number of years, he's been very knowledgeable in helping us as a committee to stay updated on the changes, and he'd like to give you some points about it tonight. I do want to point out, you have at your seat, this handout, Mr. Lawson, has prepared, maybe referring to it in his presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and the guys who came today. As Mr. Evans stated, I'm the last to be serving in this state, working with juvenile justice for 25 years. I've been a chief court counselor for 10, oversee juvenile probation for Edgecombe, Nash, and Wilson County. And this is kind of an exciting time for our division, because with raise, the age is increasing, and in 2017, lawmakers agreed to raise the age of juvenile jurisdiction from non-violent offenses to the age of 18. Studies show that the success of rehabilitation for juvenile justice is higher in the adult system, so this is something to lower crime rates, and also lower law enforcement costs as well. As Mr. Evans stated, there is that detachment you guys have, and I was just going to try to hit a couple of those quick points, and then we can discuss the questions that you may have afterwards. As, it took effect yesterday, December 1, 2019, is when the age increased. Two, delinquent juveniles will now be any youth of at least six years of age and less than 18 years of age that committed crime, infractious state law, or indirect intent to court. This will not include violations of murder vehicle laws, so we're not dealing with juvenile offenders, we're not dealing with speeding offenses, seatbelt violations, those things. They are looking at raising the minimum age from six to 10. Last year, I think, the past couple of years, we haven't had any juveniles charged with a delinquent matter between ages of six up to 10. When we're looking at those ages, there's obviously some supervision issues that we need to be working with, that we're going to charge at that age. Three, a 16 to 17-year-old should be prosecuted as an adult if they have a prior district or superior court conviction. Again, this is when we're looking at non-violent offenses. Once an adult, always an adult, convictions will determine if a juvenile prosecutor is in juvenile justice. So if we're not going around talking to law enforcement, we're letting them know, if Johnny has a prior conviction, at that point, that he will be moved up to be a superior court system, anything that's non-prior or 16 to 17-year-old will stay in the juvenile justice system. Four, violations of murder vehicle law punishable by misdemeanor and fractures shall not be considered as a conviction unless the convictions will impair driving. Currently, our prayer for judgment's not going to consider a conviction, as you may or may not know, prayer for judgment is that they can find you guilty of violation without your actual entering of judgment. So, one of the things that we're going to be working with the 16 to 17-year-olds, is if we have a juvenile that's been charged with speeding offense. The speeding offense citation is staying in the adult system, unless they go during a search of the car, they determine that it was marijuana-induced, they're a 16 to 17-year-old, they're marijuana charged, it may be possible in the juvenile justice system. So we can potentially have to look at, you know, two different, one offense being the adult system, and we just got to continue to work together. Because the hardest part about this job, as I'm telling people, is that we have to look in the best interest of children, because we are all working with children. We also have to look at protection of the community as well, and that's one of the difficult things about finding that happy balance between the both. Five, a 16-years-old age or over at the time of offense, if an offense is a class A through G felony, the court shall automatically transfer jurisdiction of the juvenile to superior court. And I'll list below a couple, some of the A through G felonies that will be an automatic transfer, such as murder, rape, sex offense, armed robbery, burglary, assault and endangerment, intent to kill. We, most of our youth that we have in the process for our juvenile justice system here in Edgecombe County, we do have some of those, unfortunately, that are charged with some of those offenses. And that's not the majority of the charges that we're, that we will see. But again, if we have someone, a 16 to 17-year-old that is charged with that, that'd be an automatic transfer, even if they have no prior conviction. So, we take up Johnny, has no prior conviction, if he's charged with armed robbery, which is a class D offense, that was told to us, we process the complaint, it'd be automatically bound over to superior court. Six, if a youth is charged with an H or I felony after notice hearing, if I don't recall the calls, the youth could be transferred to superior court, that's kind of how we're doing things now. Half the complaints that we receive in Edgecombe County are usually following an H through I felony range, such as felony breaking and entering, or arson after breaking and entering, larceny with firearm, felony larceny, possession of赃, selling marijuana, breaking and entering motor vehicles. Age of waivers, 13, if a juvenile's actually charged with a serious offense, they can be bound over to superior court at the age of 13. So this is kind of how we're doing things now, in the juvenile justice system. So an H or I, depending on call of calls, they may be transferred to superior court, that's just dependent. Seven, an individual over 21 that's committed an offense, has a juvenile or is now 18 years basic, is bound over, if superior custody is ordered, he or she will be detained at the county jail. So, if we have a 16-year-old that's actually charged with very serious offense, they would actually, and they're bound over to superior court, they would stay in one of our county jails, they would stay in one of our juvenile justice facilities, until they turn the age of 18, at that time, they'll be transferred to jail. At that time, they'll be transferred to jail. Because we are working on very diligently, we're making sure we have wings for population, because we do have facilities, because we don't have younger populations in one wing, we have older populations in those. And so there's a lot of work that's going behind the scenes to making sure we're keeping those youths separated. Ten, I just wanted to say that we're stressing that we're just asking that law enforcement continue to help us transport, after hours. We, one of the things with the raise the age budget, transportation is part of this, and we've got transportation teams, we're actually trying to hire those that's going to transport from detention to court, from a whole facility court and from detention to county jails. And below is a chart of kind of where we're looking at in terms of actual juveniles that have actually been placed in our juvenile detention facilities. It costs a hundred twenty-two dollars a day to the county. Our department pays an additional hundred twenty-two dollars a day for any youth that's placed in detention, and that's kind of the number we pay for our detention emissions.
And this, if you're talking about really, detention centers might not necessarily be a county?
Detention centers are juvenile centers.
Right, for your juvenile centers?
Yes, sir.
And after hours with, and so whose responsibility is it for transportation, even if it's after hours?
If it's after hours, it is, it's usually asked our local law enforcement to help us.
And you're then giving up assistance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we've been, and this same attachment that you guys have been doing, you know, we've been going, training all the local law enforcement agencies to tell them what's fixed, what's coming with raise age. We kind of make sure we're cooperating with the partner and working together.
An example, if somebody's arrested here in the south of hours and then they're transported, where would, give us some positive, where would they be going?
Pitts Juvenile Detention Center.
Where would they be?
Where would they be?
Where would they do with the detention center be?
In Grable at Pitts Juvenile Detention Center.
If there's no vacancy there?
There will be a vacancy.
There will be a vacancy?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. One of the things that we want to accommodate law enforcement, because they are helping us with tree station, they should, we will call our facilities, make sure that they're new to common, and then they were transported there.
So you're saying they would win a fuck in Grable?
No, sir, they should not. That's what I have been told.
Okay, all right, okay.
That's what I've been, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So they would be going to Muggins?
No, sir, not for, not for, because detention is a short-term confinement situation. So that would be after hours at night, they go forty-five minutes off the road to detention in Grable and go from there. Yes, sir. Any other questions? We are, there's ninety-seven positions, court council positions, that's what I oversee.
How many?
Ninety-seven positions across the state. Yes, sir, we're getting one in Edgewood, we're getting one in Wilson County. There is operational funds available, so they're looking at some of the local jails to make sure, see if we can partner with them to make sure, hopefully, our numbers will be increasing. To make sure we have means to make sure we keep those youth housed if we need to. Additional funding for juvenile prevention council programs. Additional funding, as I stated, for transportation. Also, there's going to be a big push right now for vocational programming for our youth. Of course, we are going to be working with the older population, we do know.
And this, it's going to require more court time?
Yes, sir.
I just, but the board, it's going to require more court, more court time.
Yes, we should have more youth, unfortunately, being charged with offenses, because now we're dealing with sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. Yes, sir. Sir, any other questions?
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Walston, I can mean you have more questions.
Anything else from the board? Thank you. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're scheduled for public petitions. If there's anybody here that would like to come to the board, if there's anything, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. You see anybody here to speak? Here and none, move on to other business. Consideration of approval of budget amendments, anything to be brought to the board's attention?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have you to direct your attention to budget revision number four. They're numbered at the top right corner of the budget amendment. And as you're turning to that, I want to invite Mr. William Johnson to come up and give you some background on this budget amendment. No, no, this is the one that's in your agenda.
You said on four?
Yes.
I'm actually calling Karen LaChapelle as well, in case she has more information that I, you guys have a question that I can directly answer. So a few years back, the Health Department received a grant, and the grant was from
CCI and the Community Care Network.
And we have had trouble spending this grant money over the past few years. I know that's hard to believe, but we've turned in a lot of things and requested a lot of things that were not approved. And now the program is asking for this money back. So this budget amendment is taking the funds from the fund balance and bringing it back into expenditure so that we can write these grant funds back to the organization.
You guys have a negative on your team?
Not, not.
But we like, we like to know why we couldn't spend money.
Not exactly that we'd have trouble spending it, we're not allowed to spend it.
Okay.
We had a lot of ways to spend it. One of them was to lease cars, and our county does not allow us to lease cars. We asked to be able to spend it promoting positive messages about children, and we were not allowed to do that by the group. It was not money that was given to us in a grant, it was money that was given us for services rendered, and we were to put it in. The money that you're returning is not county funding. It's all money that we were given from the Community Care Network of North Carolina. Two uses, and a three C, four C program, which is the care coordination for children, and just care coordination for children. And everything that we put before them, we went away, just spent it. Just about every county outside North Carolina has had to return this money.
What kind of things did they allow you to do?
We never could figure that out.
Oh, they didn't send you a list?
The one thing they would allow us, we knew, is to lease cars, and our county does not allow us to do it.
Did we spend any of the money?
Very little, but I can't remember what it was used on. Some counties ended up paying money back, because they spent it outside the front line. And we always tried to get it paid first, so we didn't get a payback situation. Most counties, I don't know too many that don't have to pay something back. From my understanding, that's a bit over eight hundred thousand.
And how long?
I think it was two thousand eleven.
Down the leg.
How much do we have to spend?
Sixty-one thousand, sixty-three dollars.
Hundred sixty-one thousand?
Yes, sir.
And they wouldn't let you spend it? They wanted that money back. Because they should have sent you a list of what you could have spent.
Yeah, if you could have leased a car, could you buy one?
Not.
I got a question. Has money been in a restricted account all along?
Yes, sir, it's been in the Health Department's fund balance account. So it's not been in with general fund money at all.
So the budget line that you see on the amendment that says fund balance has to be Health Department's fund balance, not the general fund?
Okay, so since twenty-eleven, they have not sent us a letter asking to what that was?
No, they just sent me about last July. And just so you know, I have, I have part of this one to keep.
You said two thousand eleven?
I think that's been, I have to get that question out. But we've gotten a little bit each year, to be able to do this. We have started, we've done a question for it.
You moved it, you moved it, you said?
At the end of the fiscal year, we rolled it through the fund.
Right, at the end of our fiscal year, when it wasn't standing, we rolled back it to fund balance.
Do you still have that program?
Yes.
How do you find it?
You still have?
Have a child, for a year, we get a, other.
Any other questions?
Now, this might seem too simple. Since two thousand eleven, have we not just called somebody, asked him? So what can I use it for?
Every year. And basically, the things that we can use it for, the dispense kind of money for us, we tried to do it on staff, to be able to hire, to contract community nutrition, that was not allowed. We tried to hire social workers, like, if that was not allowed.
So what did he give you money for? That's our question. What did he give you money for?
I believe we can get a, to rent a car. I guess, to rent a car. There was not a lot of reasons that we were allowed to spend it.
So they saved you money?
But now they're requesting it, from my understanding, to, to support a computer program that they're doing to, that they've implemented for.
So they saved you money to use for nothing you can find? So they're going to get the money back to do what they want?
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like to me. In eight years, you can't, we tried.
Why couldn't we reduce our vehicle fleet and just allow this department to lease cars? Use them?
Well, you know, the lease terms, we didn't feel like we could get those to a point that would make sense in the life of the owner.
It's free money, I mean, it's a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars we just figured out the lease terms to fit that number.
It's too late, I don't have that question.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, everything, yes, and that's.
Oh, and I was going to ask, so why is leasing not a part of what we can do?
Well, I think she needed to clarify, it's not something that we can't do. We just have never leased cars. If you remember, I mean, we went back looking at leasing, the option of leasing some vehicles to cover some needs from the sheriff's department, the numbers just did not make sense for us to lease cars.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, is money, is money got to go back?
Yep.
And staff has, has tried to do what they thought they could do. They didn't have something that they could bring to us, that we could make some changes. It's not our money to change. And were there any other, anything, any other in the budget request that you need to?
Yes, sir, also, thank you. Also, you had some additional ones that were at your seat. Yes, sir, if you would consider allowing us to add them as well. Most of these are fairly routine. I do want to point out budget revision number thirteen. You'll see it's for Principal Water Sewer Project, need an increase in funds. And so this project, and the amount of the project has increased, this will be reimbursed by funds from USDA grant and loans. What we do is to increase that budget by forty thousand dollars, you'll see there. Number fourteen, additional funding for water and sewer generator repairs for Matthews. Another area is FEMA reimbursable. So we had some generators in letdowns that were damaged after Hurricane Matthews, and we did get FEMA through Public Assistance Program approval to replace those generators. But we realized that we had not budgeted that additional money, and so we need to budget that, and that is coming from FEMA. And the others are fair and routine, but I'd be happy to answer any questions here.
Questions in reference to any of the budget amendments? Now, did I get a motion to approve? Is there motion to approve? Second? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, is approved. And I'll be, that's it.
Yes, sir. In June, you adopted changes to the county's ordinance pertaining to animal services. Since then, the Animal Welfare Advisory Council has continued to review the ordinance and have further recommendations regarding Article Three, the section that discusses wild or exotic animals. In summary, the changes they recommended to this section would remove the responsibility of committing and enforcement of wild and exotic animals from animal services and leave that to the Wildlife Commission and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. The recommended change would also ban the keeping of wild animals and venomous and dangerous exotic animals. In addition to the changes in Article Three, the council also recommends a change to the recently amended Article Two, Section four dash thirty-four. They recommend to add metal to the section that discusses barrels on the list of conditions that shall not constitute adequate shelter. These changes do require public hearing, therefore, I recommend that you call for that to be held at your January six meeting. I do want to point out, Mr. Fine, sir.
How much is your opinion?
Okay.
Is there more questions?
Kathy Williams, she chairs the Animal Welfare Advisory Council. So I do want to note that Mr. Peters and I will review the proposed language for that. I think we do need to make a couple of changes to accommodate grandfathering in existing situations. So, but we'll make those changes and get those out for public hearing in two sentences.
Is there a motion to call for public hearing, January sixth? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, is approved. Thank you.
While Ms. Williams is standing here, we want to commend her and the whole advisory council. They've spent tremendous amount of time and effort into reviewing these ordinances, as well as helping to promote the changes that have already been made. They've done a lot to help you.
And the board also, I want to thank you also, because you have done a good job with what could continue to be a controversial topic.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Number C?
Item C is regarding the abandonment of Walston Road. Staff of North Carolina Department of Transportation received a petition to close a portion, excuse me, of Walston Road, or State Road fifteen forty-nine. This section is a gravel road east of Mayo Crossroads and runs in a southeastern direction for seven tenths of a mile to a dead end. They recommend that the abandonment of this portion of the road, which requires your approval. I recommend that you approve the request as presented.
It's just some that behind us.
And so these are additional maps that's about.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to know where he is.
Okay, well.
East of Cadida, up in the southeastern part of county. Just off of Highway forty-two, or R forty-two.
So if you see the map in your agenda packet, you'll see that it is near the intersection of Fountain Falls Room in NC forty-two.
And closure gives the property to the property owners, doesn't it? Closure of this road, the property reverts to the property owners, doesn't it? Is that, am I asking that question?
It takes it off of the state, you make the decision.
It takes it off.
Those people, wouldn't they would have to make that?
There's no, it's basically, I believe, a road that runs up like a pond. There are no houses.
It becomes their property, doesn't it? It becomes the land-own's property?
General, I mean, without knowledge.
Okay, gotcha, okay. It's not an overall, it's not just a direct, you can't ask, okay, okay. Did I get a motion? Motion accepted. Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like the road is closed. Number T?
Item D is regarding the Recreation Mini Grant. The Recreation Mini Grant program was created to offer grants of up to two thousand dollars each to community-based organizations that provide recreational facilities and/or activity. The review committee you appointed met Monday in the neighborhood committee to discuss and rank the seven proposals received. Each proposal was rated based on the project description, timeline, areas served, number of individuals served, duration of the program, budget, feasibility, and the capacity of the organization. The committee recommends that all seven projects be funded in the amounts listed in the attached document. It is recommended the board approves grant awards for those seven organizations and authorize me to execute a written dispute.
Motion? Second? Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, is approved. Consideration approval of two thousand twenty, all this scheduled, it's in your agenda packet. Did you have any questions? Go right ahead.
Clear my mind, December forty-four, twenty-two, twenty-eight. Is that what we're going to do?
A couple of years ago, I believe, the board voted to change our policy to that we give three days for Christmas holiday regardless of when our Christmas is.
So I'll just years probably spread it out to month?
So it's the day before the day of Christmas?
We can change it and put it back. It's not a done deal, you. We could change it.
And Ms. Munga reminds me that that follows the state holiday.
That follows the state, okay. Motion to approve? Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, aye? All opposed? Here and none, is approved. We've done have consideration approval of additional funding for JCPC programs. Is it motion approved? Second? Second? Is that second?
Sir.
Question? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Of fourth minutes, we have nursing home and adult care advisory committee, we have a resignation, and we have no recommendation on that. We have North Carolina Eastern Region, Mr. Anderson has resigned. Is there a commissioner here that would like to serve? That is on the North Carolina Eastern Region, is there a commissioner that would like to We'll think about it for the next meeting. Think about it, if there's a commissioner would like to serve. The planning board, we have Mr. William Gaines and Ms. Edna Parker, and they're recommended for reappointment. Is there a second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. Ms. Gaines and Ms. Parker, reappointed. And we have the nursing home and adult care home advisory committee, and the Eastern Region that we would consider at our next meeting. Planning board reports?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to call and simply announce our planning director up to give the planning board a report.
We've got our planning board meeting on this month, and we just had two, two, three, three items on our agenda. We had a tax amendment for agro tourism, we had another tax amendment that staff recommended for, and our unified building, and to bonafide fund, there was a resounding request for D one to, from Air Bird to D one, and we were requesting these requests, these requests be come next month for our call for public hearing for next county admissions meeting.
Now, there, any questions on this? I think there's a body of entities before we take them, get a motion. I missed it all, I'm sorry. Any questions? If not, as, we need to put the resounding request, do we need to take them individually? Okay, we need to put, is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for the resounding request for our January? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, it is scheduled. Now, there is, is there a request to, for the agriculture, agro tourism, to put, to change in the tax amendment for agro tourism? Is there motion for that on our next month public hearing? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, they're both scheduled for our January meeting. Is anything else to come? Tax amendment for the border? Okay. Is there, is there a motion to, to call for public hearing on our January meeting? Question? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, it is called, we have three public hearings for different... Half the list that are released for review and approval, anything to be brought to our attention?
Yes, sir, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Contracts for review and approval, anything that did we draw to our attention?
Yes, sir, you'll see, just have one tonight, um, this is for your review, and authorized to approve those.
Motion to approve? Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed, is hearing none. They also, they've got no reports. Mr. Evans, anything you brought to our board's attention, anything you'd like, go ahead.
I do want to point out, as far as our financial summary report, that report was produced earlier than usual this year, we could work for this agenda packet because of the Thanksgiving holiday, so it does not include payroll and longevity, so there are some pretty significant expenses that don't show in this report, but they'll catch up next month.
Any questions, subject management? Hearing none, Department of Commerce to review the manager's report, what do you need to bring to our attention in that?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to call William Johnson back up to the podium to discuss items of B and C, Special Olympics Committee of the Department of Solid Waste Permit. Uh, Special Olympics update? We have met again last month, and the town of Tarboro has decided, and we're very thankful for it, to add the duties of the Special Olympics Coordinator for Enchova County to the job description of one of their department employees. That employee's going to receive some compensation for those increased duties. The town has requested of the county that we help fund the Special Olympics, not only including that person's compensation for those job responsibilities, but also for the actual putting on of those events. The town wrote a letter to Mr. Evans last week requesting five thousand dollars. We did, if you remember, in your Recreation Mini Grant you passed a few minutes ago, you did approve fifteen hundred dollars out of that pot of money to go towards the Special Olympics, but the town hasn't requested an additional five thousand dollars.
Well, that's it, we get on with the town in terms of what he's going to recommend to this board, that's correct?
Yes, sir, that's right. So the recommendation is, being that you have already approved fifteen hundred dollars, we are at mid-year, so of the request, I would suggest or recommend that you approve twenty-five hundred dollars to go to the town of Tarboro to help cover the personnel costs for the remainder of the year for this position.
Uh, with that, you want a suggestion, aye?
Yes, sir.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the vote, sign aye. All opposed? Without questions, then go ahead.
Yes, sir, the next thing Mr. Evans would like me to speak about is the solid waste permit policy update. I have hired a vendor to construct these permits, I have typed up a letter to, to be mailed with the permits to all of our citizens. Those permits will be mailed and should be in the mailboxes of all of our citizens who qualify for a permit by December fifteenth. That will give some timeframe for them to come and ask questions to me of why they may or may not have received a permit. I've already got, I've probably fielded three or four dozen calls in my office the last couple of weeks, thanks to the papers, helping me get the word out and doing some articles on this permit policy, it really, really helped. I do want to, I want the commissioners to know, very, very clear of the record, there are eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one qualifying properties in our county that qualify to receive a, or that we assess a solid waste disposal fee on every year. Of those eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one properties, nine hundred and eighty-eight currently owe some form of that solid waste fee from two thousand and eighteen, some of them are as low as thirty cents, and some of them are as high as five hundred dollars. The annual fee is around a hundred dollars a year, so some of those people have prior years behind two thousand and eighteen that they owe the solid waste fee.
Are we still picking up the solid waste?
Excuse me, sir?
Do we still pick up the solid waste?
That's, currently, they still are able to use the, the permit, the convenient sites, because we do not have this permit policy fully in place yet, but, yes, sir, after these permits are mailed out, and starting January first, those who still owe that solid waste fee from two thousand and eighteen or prior, will not receive a permit in the mail.
Were you going to do that, hold it up or just one's owed, five or twelve? Or is it, we're getting the permit?
I should have written it off.
No, I, I don't know, I'm just, seriously, I'm asking.
Yes, sir. Um, the way we're going to, to take it in the tax office is if you owe it, it's to be paid, you know, some of those, and there's only, really only a few that owe more than one year, I can count on one hand, and the tax department does have a parent plan policy in place, and we can work some, we can always work something out with our citizens.
If you stop, if you stop making exceptions, you've got a problem.
Why would a person owe that? I mean, if, if they didn't pay their fees, they're regularly...
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's attached to your tax bill every year, so there, you know, that tax bill goes unpaid, and the solid waste fees also, they...
So it's the same calculation?
Boy, it's a fee, not a tax, so I can't, you know, we had some, me and Trey had some discussions, and I had some discussions with the Department of Revenue, you know, a lot of times you come in and, you know, we have a policy in the tax department, if, if you owe to back taxes, I'm going to apply it to your interest first and things like that, because this is a fee and not a tax, I cannot treat it the same. If somebody comes in and they owe you back taxes, but they want to just pay their solid waste fee so they can get their permit, they, they are allowed to do that.